This is OCCN 2020.
Welcome to the conversation with candidates sponsored by the Oberlin Community Candidates Night Planning Committee. I am Kurt Russell, resident of Oberlin and teacher at Oberlin High School. Joining me are Allison Ricker and Lilly Sandler, members of the OCCN Committee, and three of the four candidates for Lorraine County Commissioner, Lori Kokowski, David Moore, and Sharon Sueda. Michelle Hong was also invited and declined to participate. Vote411.org, the voter information site created by the League of Women Voters, provides this summary of the responsibilities of the Board of County Commissioners, and I quote, "to exercise financial control of county expenditures, to authorize public works, to purchase land and buildings, to vet contracts, to plan and administer welfare." The Board of County Commissioners also appoints other officials to operate various departments. I encourage viewers to read about the candidates and their answers to questions from the League on Vote411.org. We will begin with two-minute statements from each candidate, beginning with Lori Kokowski, and then move into questions from the OCCN Committee and those submitted by community members. Alternating among the candidates, we would take 30 minutes for answering questions, followed by two minutes each for any follow-up or responses to each other. Ms. Kokowski, please begin.
Thank you. Well, thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening to talk about this very important election and what it means to Lorraine County. I am Lori Kokowski, and I've been serving as your Lorraine County Commissioner since 2005. Prior to that, I served on Lorraine City Council for three terms. I believe we need experienced leadership as we navigate all the issues that we're facing, as we deal with COVID-19, the drug epidemic, and the unrest that we've seen come to light over the last year. I believe my experience is essential in serving the community, and I care about the people that I serve. I have built strong relationships with leaders throughout the county over the years while I have been in office. I have also proven track record of a willingness to work with people to get things done in our community. I'm interested in holding this office because I am a lifelong resident of Lorraine County. I was raised here. I raised my kids here, and I also have grandkids. So making this county a place for families to work and play is very important to me. I will continue to serve with honesty and integrity. I look forward to working on future initiatives like the Carvana Project, which is creating 400 new jobs and a multimillion-dollar investment in Lorraine County. We were able to partner with the Aliria Township, the cities of Lorraine and Aliria, the state of Ohio, and the school district to get that project done during an epidemic or a pandemic. Things are not going to be easy going forward, but I am prepared and ready for the challenges ahead. I thank you for your interest in the candidate-seeking office, and I hope that you would consider my experience when you choose who to vote for in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kokowski. Mr. Moore, please.
Hey, thanks for having me. I'm David Moore. I previously was elected county commissioner in 2000, being the first Republican since 1956. Within the first 90 days, we created a lot of programs that I would probably compare to see what my opponent has done in 18 months. They did not have hiring, any hiring practices. Basically, if you sold state product, you'd get a job at 911. The turnover was 26 turnovers in two years. They had no drug policy. They had no training or nothing. I mean, basically, they just hired anybody without any training. So back then, within the first 90 days, we stopped the Justice Center fiasco that was going on. And I think five or six people went to jail over that. We stopped, there was a sort of nowhere back then. We fixed that. We created, I mean, I got like two pages, so I keep it under two minutes, okay? We created a domestic steel policy to help out the steel plants here in Lorraine County. And we did a half a million dollars that we gave to all the, like Oberlin benefited from this too, was the downtown Main Street programs. We got a half a million dollars to help them hire people to get more grants, and that helped them to get more money to beautify their downtowns. We also came up with some things called work partnerships with Lorraine County Community College with the Glide Program, which created thousands of jobs over the last 20 years, and it's still going on today. It was a great partnership when we created it with Dr. Church at the time. You know, a lot of things were going on before I took office. Commissioners would have three- to four-hour executive meetings before I took office. So every time we'd go to an executive session, I would always have the county prosecutor ask me, or I'd ask him, "Is this, you know, executive session discussion?" He'd say yes or no. If it was no, then we'd go out in public. So we kind of, we kind of got away from what they were doing for years. And I'm really, I don't like one-party systems. There's no checks and balances currently in the county commissioner's office. But I really like, you know, we need to get that back. And I thought I'd have an hour. You said 15 seconds? Okay. Okay, well, I'll keep, I'll try to throw in some of the other things I've done. But really, I really want to get back in and help again and get the county back on track.
Mr. Moore, thank you so much. Ms. Sueda, yes, please.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, and for everybody who's in attendance, as well as thank you for the invitation to participate. I like Commissioner Kokowski. I'm a lifelong resident of Lorraine County. I've been a successful businesswoman here. I have raised my children, my grandchildren here in the county. And I've created a lot of private sector jobs as well as jobs since I've been in office. Now, I'm interested in retaining my seat because I'd like to continue and complete the good work that I've been able to initiate in my first 19 months of office. I'm really passionate about serving the needs of our constituents. And I think you've seen through my hard work and my willingness for cooperation, as well as the support of my colleagues, we have been able to accomplish a lot even amidst a pandemic. So 19 months in office, nine months our pandemic. I'd like to say that my steady and solid leadership skills have really had a chance to be tested, tried, and proven. I also have an attitude about being a public servant or being an elected official. I think that it calls you to a higher standard. I feel that by being an elected official, you sometimes have to get out of your lane. Being an elected official means that you've got to be in the community you serve. You have to be part of that community. That's why on Saturday mornings, you will see me either down in South Lorraine with a group that's doing a park cleanup or delivering beds in Wilkes-Billet, where we delivered 85 beds just this last Saturday. I'm proud to have been named a board member for the newly formed Good Nights. So I can go on, but you got it. I don't think you, you just belong to organizations. You participate, and I give back to the community that I serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sueda, and thank you all. At this time, we will move on to some questions, and Ms. Kokowski, if I could start with you. In the first question, what skills do you bring to the position that makes you best suited to serve on the Board of Commissioners?
Well, as a county commissioner, our job is, like you said earlier, is to fund county government. And the criminal justice system is where about 80% of our budget is spent. That includes the sheriff, jails, courts, probation, clerk of courts, and the coroner. You know, prior to the pandemic, we were all focusing on the drug epidemic. But unfortunately, the drug epidemic is still here. It's not getting much attention anymore, but this has put a major strain on our justice system. And we have supported our judges in Lorraine County that have created specialty dockets to help people with both addiction and mental health issues to get them into treatment instead of into incarceration. I have attended almost all the graduations of those people who have turned their lives around, and I'm proud of the work that's being done by our courts and our probation department to help people who would have normally ended up in either jail or a prison system. Also worked at putting together a building for the Drug Task Force, our DEA and FBI, to get the dealers off the streets. The drugs are way more dangerous today than they were in the past. There's counterfeit pills out there that look exactly like prescription medications, but they're laced with fentanyl. So somebody that has a little bit of anxiety or depression, they buy Xanax off the street. They take that pill, and they may never wake up. So we're working really hard to try with both the Mental Health and Addiction Board and our courts and our judges to try to help these people to turn their lives around. And I'm very passionate about that, and I want to work real hard to hopefully get a crisis stabilization center in our community to help people turn their lives around.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Mr. Moore, I will go to you. Same question. What skills do you bring to the position that make you best suited to serve on the Board of Commissioners?
Well, I was, I had like the largest mortgage company at one time in the state of Ohio with over 350 employees. We were in 28 states, and I brought that work ethic to the county in 2001 through 2005. They had no organizational charts. They had nothing. I mean, it was like, it was really kind of running on their own boat. So what happened was, we came in there, and within the first, like I said, within the first 90 days, we turned it upside down. We stopped the Justice Center. People went to jail, and then we got it built. So when I kind of, when we took over, because there was a new administrator at that time back in July previously before I took office, I came in as the first Republican, and they were all worried about me, but they don't realize I don't bow to party rule, okay? I don't like one-party rule, whether it's Republican or Democrat. I got along with everybody. I worked across the aisle and built a consensus, which you have to do nowadays. You know, right now, the townships don't feel like that. They feel like they're being hammered by the county administration right now. And so what I do is I bring to the table my abilities to bring, to build consensus and bring people together. And I proved that for the five, or the four years that I served. And, you know, I was very effective in keeping the budget in control because seriously, that's the most important thing. That's your job, which is you are the budget authority for the county. And when I was there, I kept spending under, under inflation, which means nine and a half percent is what the number was over the four years. Previously, the previous six years, it was increasing by 10% every year. And then after I left, I did not run or seek reelection. I decided that it was more important to raise the children and get them out of high school. Now they're 25, 26, and 30, and I got, kind of got back into the political game. I'd done a Columbus and was essential in getting rid of Matt Borges out of Columbus. And so I was proud of that even within our own party. So I'm not afraid to take people on from either party. My loyalties are to the voters and to the people that elect me.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. And finally, Ms. Sueda, what skills do you bring to the position that makes you best suited to serve on the Board of Commissioners?
I think that my, my best skills that suit me for the job are the fact that I've been an experienced leader. I've mentored scores of young women into successful careers over the course of my lifetime. I also have been a, not just a successful business owner, but I'm proud of the fact that the two businesses that I started over 30 years ago sustained and thrived through both economic uptimes and economic downturns. I've never laid off an employee. I have, nor have I ever closed a business and left people unemployed. I have always found a way to manage and to be able to keep people working without having to close a door on them and, and not be able to provide the job that I once, once promised to them. Now, my budgetary experience and my management skills are also valuable to the county because it's the future prosperity and the real estate development experience that I have that's going to be essential for attracting new investment and negotiating collaborations. That's my true expertise. I have been a negotiator, a collaborator, and I, one of my favorite stories is the fact that, you know, when people talk about being partisan, that doesn't enter into the, into the formula for me because as a real estate agent and broker for over 30 years, night after night, I would sit at somebody's kitchen table, and when I was at that table, one person wanted more money and one wanted to pay less, and yet by the end of the night, we got together. We were able to, to create the transaction, bring them together, and to create a win-win for everybody. I bring that skill and that talent to my job, and it's been, it's been evidenced. We, I haven't hammered anyone. I don't know what the hammering is, but I build bridges, not tear them down. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, if I could start with you for question number two. What is the biggest challenge facing the county? And what is being done, or should be done, to address that challenge?
Well, there's several challenges when you're in charge of all the departments and all the money that's coming through from the state. Currently, right now, 911 seems to be what everyone's talking about. 911 is, you know, people have said it's a disaster, and I don't want to say it is a disaster, but what's going on right now is, is not right. You're getting electronic shutdowns. You're getting, you know, cables. People not being able to communicate. I have my own family members that are working as first responders who think it's a joke. Now, back in 2000, we built a brand-new building, had everything going on, and, you know, that was kind of a pet project of ours to make sure that 911 was effective and efficient. Right now, most of the first responders don't, I don't want to say they don't trust it, but they get sent on, there's just too many issues with it being done. And that, that's going to be something I can fix. I did it before. I'll do it again. The budget controls that are in place, you know, when Tom Williams left office in top 2015, the budget was at $55 million. They increased the sales tax after the people said no, and now they got an extra, they're up to $70 million in the general fund. Something's going on, and nobody, and what I'm hearing on the street, these are from other elected officials, township trustees and such. They don't know what's going on, and they don't feel like they're part of the team. When I was in office, I brought everybody together, and I would show them, hey, the money's just not there. And by, and by doing that, we kept a very, you know, affluent county. People weren't laid up, but we didn't replace people. When I left, there was 85 jobs that we just did not replace when people retired out. And that's the biggest expense at the county is how many employees you have and the cost to, to keep them. And so that's how we kind of kept our budgets in line, and honestly, we are the budget authority for the county. And I think 911 is going to be the big issue.
Thank you so much. Ms. Sueda, what is the biggest challenge facing the county? And what is being done, or should be done, to address that challenge?
Certainly. Well, the biggest challenge, sadly, for my opponent, it is not 911. We do have some hiring issues over there because we have high turnover. We have a couple of factions who don't always get along, so folks get stuck with a lot of overtime. But we have invested money to put the best equipment possible into that facility, and we're very proud, and I would never, ever let those employees over there think that I called it a disaster or a joke. So I apologize to the hard-working folks over at 911. But back to that, I want to talk about the true big challenge facing our county, and it's a dual challenge. We have an addiction pandemic that was cited by Commissioner Kokowski. It is growing through this, through the COVID pandemic. And while we took tough action immediately, once I got into office to merge our two boards, we merged the Addiction Board and the Mental Health Board because we discovered that we were not only the only county in the state that didn't have a merged board, but through being separated, we were leaving a million dollars in funding on the table. So through a lawsuit, we did initiate that action. They are since moving forward, working together, and I am hopeful that we're going to see a, a one-stop crisis center soon. The second, the second problem we have is the food insecurity in Lorraine County. Lorraine County actually has a population of 13.2% of the population is affected by food insecurity, and nearly 47% of those individuals are not qualified for federal nutrition assistance. So those are the two important issues that I would focus on immediately. 911, we're working with them to make that a great center, make it better than it is even now. But it's more about feeding people and keeping them alive. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kokowski, what is the biggest challenge facing the county? And what is being done, or should be done, to address that challenge?
Well, I think I mentioned that earlier with the opioid epidemic and the things that we have done to help that situation with the drug enforcement building. But with Mr. Moore bringing up the 911 issue, that is so not factual. We have a state-of-the-art 911 center with state-of-the-art equipment. We have had a couple of times where our provider was not able to get the calls to us, which is completely out of control. We have numerous redundancies, backups to the backups to the backups, so that our equipment works. If we can't get the calls, there's nothing that can be done about it. For instance, we had a issue where a fiber optic line was hit out in Twinsburg, and the calls could not get to us through Windstream, which is our provider. So, you know, some things just were at the mercy of Windstream, and if they can't get the calls to us, the calls can't come to us. But we also have a WEN system. It's, it's like a reverse 911 system, emergency notification system. Everybody needs to sign up for that. If and when our system goes down in the future, you can be notified as to what number to call if you can't reach our 911 operator. So the other issue that I think we're facing, since our budget, the budget's not a problem right now, but, you know, the rebuilding after this pandemic is over, and I don't know that we've really seen the bottom of that yet. Just all the businesses that have slowed or closed because of the pandemic, I think, you know, building upon that, once we see where we're at, I think that's going to be our biggest challenge going forward.
Thank you so much. Ms. Sueda, if I could start with you. What policy or legislative actions do you suggest that will address inequality to provide better opportunity for marginalized people in our county?
Well, I think I already spoke to you about the food insecurity and the fact that I do work to provide beds for youngsters who don't have beds. So a lot of this, I feel that its allocation of funding is very important. I know that through our state and through the imbalance in the state of Ohio, we've lost local government funding, and they've also clipped a lot of our, our local programs as well. We, as commissioners, have been working, first of all, we did make a proclamation to create racism as a systemic problem, as an issue that we want to embrace, and we want to find workable solutions. And through our activities within the NAACP, the local hospitals, as well as many of our caregiving organizations, we are working to find solutions for funding issues, food issues. I've been active in the transportation problem as well, and we are now visiting some things on the table to try to provide resources now that we're doing schooling from home, and we know that that's going to take an effect. I have three children who are educators, and educating from home works in some households. It does not work in every household, and we know that the learning gap between food shortages and learning gaps, this is going to take a toll on the future generations, and those are challenges we're, we're embracing and trying to solve.
Thank you. Ms. Kokowski, what policy or legislative actions do you suggest that will address inequality to provide better opportunity for marginalized people in our county?
We're working hard all the time to, to address those kind of issues. And I'm also proud to say that I am on the executive committee of the County Commissioners Association. So I work a lot with both Republicans and Democrats on legislative issues. So, you know, I guess I would ask you to bring to me some of those legislative requests that you would like to see happen, and I could take them to the County Commissioners Association and work with you and, you know, groups around Lorraine County to, to do what we need to do to make it better for everybody that lives here and works here.
Thank you so much. Finally, Mr. Moore, what policy or legislative actions do you suggest that will address inequality to provide better opportunity for marginalized people in our county?
Well, when I was in office, again, the first 90 days, we instituted a nepotism policy that if someone was related to you, you couldn't hire them through blood or marriage. So, you know, people feel like they need to have an opportunity, maybe be treated equally. At the county, that's not happening. You know, for example, I'm gonna go right back to 911. You got a judge's son working there. Everybody's upset about, do you think that they can't call the county commissioners because Matt Lundey's, because that guy's mom's working underneath them? So what you got is there's no opportunities at the county right now for, for anybody. But I, when I got in there, I said, "Look, we need to start advertising these jobs." Because beforehand, they go into executive session, and then they say, "Hey, whose turn is it to give one of your friends a job?" Every time it came to me, I said, "My people, the friends I have are working. You know, why don't we have an HR department so you can provide, you know, an avenue for people to complain to without feeling like they're going to get, you know, fired?" Right now, the morale is really poor from what I'm hearing from people that work there. And I'm getting it from other departments, but basically what's missing is an HR department that can create that equality when you're dealing with the county. Now, at the state level, I have connections at the state and at DC, okay? And with the state level, let's just talk about that. Matt Lundey was a rep, okay? I think between Matt and I, him being a Democrat and maybe a Republican, we'll be able to get some things done, at least recommend some things through the state to help us out. When I was there before, I took advantage of the fact that I was a Republican, went down to Columbus and got money for the county. And that's what you do. Your job is to, you're the budget authority, okay? And if there's some needs that need to be filled, people come to you. You got to figure out how to get to fill that need, whether it's through your senators, your state senators and your state reps. Then I think with the fact that Matt was a state rep, and I got my connections at the Columbus, we could probably do a lot to fix some of these inequalities.
Thank you so much. Ms. Kokowski, if I could begin with you. What one area of county services do you feel most needs additional resources? Please explain.
Resources, as in finances, I would have to say the public transit system. That's been an issue for a very, very long time. You know, in order to have a really vibrant transit system, you have to have a designated revenue source. Unfortunately, we've not been able to, the voters have not been ready to do that. A few years back, we asked for $2 a year per household to fund the transit system. The voters said no. So we've tried in various ways to get more money into the transit system by getting contracts. When we get a contract, say through Job and Family Services to provide transportation to their, their clients, we match that money. So if we get a $200,000 contract with Job and Family, we get $200,000 from the feds. So, you know, that's a way to increase public transit for everybody in the county. Oberlin has been a great partner. They've, year after year, provided additional dollars to get routes into Oberlin. That money is matched. The only money that's not matched for a transit system is the fare box. So when people go, you know, go on the bus and put their money, that, that's not. So unfortunately, we had to find better alternatives. The state does not participate very much in public transit as far as funding is concerned. So we're kind of left on our own to figure out how to do some things. Advertising is another way of getting additional dollars in. Our Veteran Service Commission, they do advertising, and we match that money. And now we are able to provide free transportation for all veterans. So, you know, we're trying to find creative ways in areas where we don't have the funding necessary to provide the services that our residents need and deserve.
Thank you so much. Mr. Moore, what one area of county services do you feel most needs additional resources? Please explain.
Additional resources? Well, if I go in there, it's going to be looking at the budget. Took me about 90 days to figure it out exactly where all the extra cash was being hidden in the budget. First thing I'm going to do is take a look at the budgets and see how it went up $15 million in four years and why all these other services are suffering because of it. You know, did they hire more family members? I don't know. And you don't really know until you get in there. Now, 911, that needs help, okay? Transit, yeah, we have ideas on transit. We're looking to go in more of a regional area. They keep doing the same thing over and over. We need money. Let's have a tax. Lorraine County votes it down every time. So when you keep doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results, you know, that's called insanity. So what I would do is I bring to the table is a way to take, I'm gonna use, you know, transit, okay? You go regional, you know, maybe there's certain areas of pocket that really do need it. So I would form some partnerships for those areas that we can afford to have transit. And hopefully, what will happen next, as it starts to succeed, because it will work, you'll see other communities jumping in, you know? I think that's some of the things I'd be looking at and we are working on. There's a lot of areas here. You oversee so much here, the Sheriff's Department. I want to make sure that they're taken care of. There's things you don't know until you're in office, such as when I was county commissioner, I went and talked to the committee, and he said, "Oh, we need, here's our, here's how we do business, ledger cards." I'm like, ledger cards? You pull over somebody for warrants? And so I'm the one that forced, or not forced, but worked out a deal with one of the commissioners to say, "Let's get them automated." Something so basic wasn't being done, and that's the kind of stuff I do. I was the first commissioner in 25 years to sit down with every director and every elected official and ask them this one question, "Do you have enough money to operate your job?" And even Greg White, who was a 25-year veteran there, said, "You're the first elected official, county commissioner, to come down and ask me that question." official, county commissioner, to come down and ask me that question. So that, that's kind of what I do. I'm more about building partnerships, you know, coalitions to get the job done.
Thank you so much. Ms. Swita, what one area of county services do you feel most needs additional resources? Please explain.
Okay, before I do that, I do want to, uh, give a little disclaimer. I've never hired anybody, not a family member, not a friend. Uh, since I've been in office, we have done open interviewing on all open positions and I have never hired, given a job to anybody.
I'd also.
Second, secondly, um, I would like to, uh, discuss the fact that, um, there is a regional transportation system, that's NOACTA. And for those of you in Lorain County that I've been working with, like Sharon Pearson over at Move, the Mobility Manager, and a lot of the foundations, um, we know NOACTA isn't going to solve our problems. We need local solutions and transportation is one of the greatest needs we have. You see, when I look at, at transportation, we know that it takes a fifteen-dollar-an-hour job just to afford a car, just to afford a car. Now, we're not talking just about folks getting to work and back. We're also talking about keeping seniors in their homes longer. We can give seniors a greater opportunity to stay in their homes if they have reliable transportation. Now, reliable transportation, for those of you who know transportation, know that that's not all axle. That's talking your first mile, last mile solutions. It's talking our electronics, uh, resources. We have, as the commissioners, we have partnered with and we have supported grant applications and projects that are designed to create alternative but reliable transportation for Lorain County. Regional's not going to cut it. And we, when we instituted our freerides for veterans, I can tell you, we did it in November and in December, ridership was up forty percent. So we were effective. Those are things that we have to embrace new ideas. We can't go back to two thousand and three or four or whatever it was. We need tomorrow's solutions today and those are the things I've been working on. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Candidates, this will be our last question and I will start with Mr. Moore. And Mr. Moore, what measures do you advocate to improve and to secure elections in Lorain County and in Ohio, or Lorain County in Ohio? What is your opinion on adding more ballot drop-off boxes in our county?
My opinion? Basically, that's the Board of, um, of Elections issue, okay? Um, they've already had the, the opinions already coming down from the Secretary of State. You know, whether, and I'm, I'm all for people having drop boxes and, and doing whatever you gotta do, but the bottom line here is that's not our responsibility, okay? The Board of Elections is their own separate entity. So, um, I've been hearing other stories of what they're, what, what I hear they're gonna do for this election is they got a hall over there called Gargis Hall that the commissioners purchased, which is good. Um, and what they're gonna do is open up voting so they can allow more people in the building, uh, uh, safe and secure distance. But as of right now, we have fifty-seven thousand people that's asked for ballots. I mean, they, they only had thirty-four thousand requests for absentees back then. So it's gonna be interesting to see how many people drop off or how many people actually mail them in. That's all I'm gonna say, I don't know.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Ms. Swita, what measures do you advocate to improve and to secure elections in Lorain County and Ohio? What is your opinion on adding more ballot drop-off boxes in our county?
Okay, so we do work very closely with the Board of Elections and, um, we know that they have been preparing for this move for quite a while. They are, since the primary had the, the little hiccup there and we didn't have a primary, uh, they have been poised and, and preparing to be able to handle the overflow and the increased numbers of the absentee ballots. But let's answer your question. What is my opinion about the drop boxes? Well, I would like to see more drop boxes. We know that it is required that they are monitored twenty-four hours a day. Well, we know that we could do that at police stations. We could have the opportunity to make dropping off, um, absentee ballots a lot more accessible for residents and voters so that they could, they aren't required to drive over to Northridge Road if that's the, the method of delivery that they choose. So I would be very much in favor of that. I'm, I'm in favor of any measure that's going to guard our voting rights, that is going to ensure that our post office will be able to be equipped and able to manage that, that flow of mail and that our most coveted right will not be interfered with. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Kukowski, what measures do you advocate to improve and to secure elections in Lorain County and Ohio? What is your opinion on adding more ballot drop-off boxes in our county?
Well, first, I do have the utmost, um, I, I believe that the, our Board of Elections is gonna do a fine job. I, I believe in them wholeheartedly. It's a bipartisan operation. Um, I also said, I, I sit on the County Commissioners Association and I'm on various committees and, and that is also very bipartisan, actually more Republicans than Democrats there. And even on this committee that I sat on this last week, we encourage the, the Secretary of State to add more drop boxes in, in all of our communities. We need to make it easier for people, uh, especially with the strain on our, our post office that seems to be inevitable. So, um, as Commissioner Swita said, we said, why not have them at police stations or other places that do have twenty-four-hour surveillance so that they are kept, um, you know, safe from anybody tampering with them? So I would wholeheartedly, um, support and have supported additional drop boxes in, in Lorain County and all over the state of Ohio.
Candidates, thank you so much. At this time, Ms. Swita, I will begin with you and you have two minutes for any responses, follow-up, um, to let the voters know about you.
Great, thank you for that. Again, I want to thank you for hosting this, this evening and having us here. I think it's so important, um, for voters to get to hear things from our voice. You know, so many people get their news off of Facebook, which is kind of comical, um, but when they can hear it from a candidate's voice and they can, they can see the passion that exists in a candidate and where their, where their direction is, I think that's valuable. So I want to thank you for that. It's, um, fun for me. I know that our last time we were doing the roundtables, this is a little different than your roundtable forum, but this is, this has been great and I appreciate it. Um, you know, when you make your, I'm gonna ask everybody, when you make your selection for Lorain County Commissioner on the ballot this November, whether you mail it, whether you go in and cast your ballot or you, um, vote by, uh, proxy in, in the office there, you go in for early voting, I hope that my hard work and energy has earned your support. You know, I've officially received the endorsements of the UAW CAP Council, the AFL-CIO, the Lorain Fire Department, the Sierra Club, the sheet metal workers, the locomotive engineers and the matriarchs. You know, and those are important endorsements. I think it shows that they're, that they have trust and, um, that they will, they feel that I can get the job done and do it in a fair and steady manner. Um, but more than that, I would like to earn the vote of my constituents. You are the folks who matter to me and I humbly ask for the favor of your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kukowski?
Well, thank you again for the opportunity. I always appreciate Oberlin, uh, taking an interest in their candidates and, and what they stand for. And I've been before Oberlin many times and, uh, over the years and I hope you know that I've served you as your commissioner with the utmost integrity. Um, I care about our community and I want to make Lorain County a safe and inviting place to call home. So I would hopefully, uh, can, hope that you consider re-electing me as your Lorain County Commissioner. I enjoy my job and, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Moore.
Thanks for having us. You know, this is the only, it's the first time we've had this happen. Nobody is debating, nobody's having this come out. This is the first time we've, all three of us has been like this, okay? So I do appreciate it. Um, I am asking for everybody to, um, support me again. Uh, I, I decided not to run for reelection, made sure my kids were raised and, uh, got back in. Now, you know, my biggest passion is the seven districts of Lorain County. This job is part-time, pays eighty-six thousand dollars a year, full benefits. Um, it's a one-party system and my goal is to divide this county up into seven. We, we tried twice to get it on the ballot. I just want to put it on the ballot, let the people have a choice. Now, you can't do that with one vote, you need two. That's why Michelle and I are running as a team this time and we're gonna make sure that we get the seven districts on the ballot so people have a choice. Do you want more of a, of a, uh, home rule type of county government where you can call them up and talk to them? Um, because right now, a lot of people are feeling disconnected. So what I'm look, what I'm proposing is seven districts, which the commissioners will be receiving about thirty to thirty-two thousand dollar a year salary. And, you know, when my buddy was out drinking with Jim Cortez four years ago while we were doing this, smoking his cigars or what have you, he, and, and he asked him, why don't you like this, Jim? He goes, because I can control three, I can't control seven and that's what's going on right now. Well, that's not gonna happen. I mean, I made sure Jim did the job that he was supposed to do, but everybody knew back then that even though Mary Jo Vassie and Betty Blair were Democrats, they knew they were looking at what was best for the, for the county and party wasn't first. And so, and that's how I am. I mean, I'm more about what's, what, I'm here looking for the voters endorsement and I'm asking for your vote. It's, every vote's gonna count. I won last time by one vote per precinct and Eric Flynn lost by half a vote for, for precinct. But every vote does matter in Lorain County. Sometimes people with what's going on in the news, they feel like nothing matters to them, that they don't, their voice can't be heard. Well, at least with myself and Michelle, I mean, your voice will not only be heard, will give you an opportunity to have representation at the local level. And thanks for having us, guys, this was nice.
Thank you. And candidates, once again, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oberlin Community Candidates Night has been a nonpartisan collaboration for more than twenty-five years. Here are the ten organizations who work together to bring you OCCN 2020. We thank them all.